Jimmy, if you could start us off with the pledge and prayer, we'll have you do both today.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the following to come before you just one more time, thank you so much for the town we work for and go around and serve. Just be with us tonight, be the guide of conversation, be our thoughts, make the right decisions for this town, yes, the same, you're saying, amen.
Amen. All right, Sandy, the fun part for you.
Lee Melles.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Scott Bolden.
Here.
And on sample. Dan Swaffer.
All right, approval of minutes for the regular meeting, July 25th, 2022, and the budget work session, July 27th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy.
Willie Melles.
Yes.
Scott Bolden.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries. I want to point out that there's an item above the minutes there, open bids for UV lights.
I've got that third.
Third on our list. Third on our list.
Okay. Do you need me to put that first? Okay. All right, action to pay accounts payable, voucher and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Willie Melles.
Yes.
Scott Bolden.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And just to show you, Sandy really wants those UV lights, so let's talk about it. So now we're talking, discussing open bids for UV lights at the sewer plant. I have a feeling it's not Sandy talking about it, though.
No, but I would ask that the town council table this because what we really should do, given the amount of the replacement UV lights, we probably really should do a public notice in the paper. And so we do have a couple of bids that were suggested, but I would ask that the council table this. If we got a bid and if we get a notice in the paper by Thursday, that will be made included in the selection.
Any council action?
Only question, is there a state bid for these? Pre-existing state bid?
Not that I know of.
Move to table.
Second.
Sandy.
Lee Melles.
Yes.
Scott Bolden.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance is on first reading, ordinance 2022-09, certifying ward boundaries.
As we discussed at a previous meeting, as I understand the Indiana code, there is a section in there with regard to certifying wards that allows the town to certify the wards as they currently are, meaning after the 2010 census. So the town is not required to redraw its wards under certain circumstances. So this ordinance does that. It allows the town to certify the wards so that you do not have to do a history thing. And this is on first reading, and I have shared this with the folks over in the election convention of Monroe County Clerk's Office. We have been willing to send you a copy of this after we have passed.
Okay. Any council discussion? Any public discussion? Seeing none. Ordinance is on second reading, ordinance 2022-08, to modify water rates, deleting the utility receipt tax.
This is before the town council on second reading, and I would ask that the town council table this because Sandy and I had a conversation this afternoon, and although the rates that I have in ordinance are what Baker Tilling gave us, Sandy and I decided that it would probably be easier for the customers in Ellisville when they looked at the ordinance to see the actual rate after the water tracking factor is factored in, as opposed to somebody calling the clerk's office and saying, what's a water tracking? So I would ask that I take one of those so that I can do some calculations and add in the water tracking factor so that we'll go to ordinances on the website or on the countdown to the code of ordinance to see if they're actually being charged, and they don't have to sit there and add any price and put down the gallons onto each usage.
Any council discussion or questions?
Uh-uh.
Any public? All right, council action?
Make a motion to table ordinance 2022-08, to modify water rates, deleting the utility receipt tax.
Second.
Willie Melles.
Yes.
Scott Bolden.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Old business, comprehensive plan, unified development ordinance, who has that?
Well, I had it put on the agenda, so we talked about it again. This is, I think, one of two past quarters, and Vision Ellisville had bids that had not been acted upon, the development of, and updating of a unified development, UDO, if you will, and to marry that with an updated comprehensive plan. It's something that we talked about a year ago, and Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we even voted to move ahead and ask Kevin to get started on trying to organize having a new comprehensive plan, a UDO development. And so when we decided to ask Taylor Group for proposal, that was one of the past quarters. So I really brought it, put it back on the agenda so we could talk. So, I mean, there was a lot of conversation in last meeting about it, and I think the Plan Commission was talking about it, and apparently some people feel like they were in the mood. So I thought another conversation about this program, and one thing was here, and I did keep the last call in there.
Okay. Yeah, that's... No. I would say, real quick, while he's getting there, my, one thing I did hear is that, and I want to clarify with the public in case it's out there, is that we're planning to do away with the Plan Department and Plan Commission. I'm not, there's, that's just, I don't even think we can get away with the Plan Commission, it's by statute, so...
No, and I will say, I sent out an email to the Plan Commission today, and basically, you know, I was thinking of the Plan Commission missing what happened to them.
Right.
And I said, okay, why didn't you take the lead and help us in Ellisville? I'll go back to what we talked about, we talked about this last year, and that's happened since, and then we put it in our request for consideration in the past quarter, in the vision of Ellisville document. And so I thought that's what we're doing, moving along.
Is that better?
Is your mic turned off?
I did.
And so, anyway, that's where we're at. I just, I'm just trying to move it along. I don't want anybody to think that, you know, we're trying to hurry this, but under the circumstances, I don't think anybody could be accused of hurrying this because we've been talking about it for years.
This was about this time last year or before.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That we started talking about this.
So it's, I think, I think the timing's right now, after the process we went through in Vision Ellisville and had the Taylor Group develop and coordinate, and now that we've established a relationship with them, I'm looking forward to working with them, so the fact that they can help us with this just seems to be right, and so I want to talk about that.
The Plan Department, somebody on there had mentioned they have not received a copy of the Invision Ellisville plan from phase one. Were you able to find one to send out, Sandy?
Yes. You sent us the lit, and it's on the Chambers website, so Denise was going to try to put the link, so the link now is on our website.
Okay, I would make sure, I'd email that to the, those on the Plan Commission. I looked for their email addresses and couldn't find it, but, because they were saying they knew nothing about it. That's one of the reasons why they were, and I know that the Taylor Group wants to keep everybody in the loop too, so I'm just trying to...
Plus, Darla has scheduled them to come and talk at our next Plan Commission meeting.
And there has been a couple of books.
I know.
To take out.
They, neither one seem to be there now, I don't know.
Well, somebody's taken them out.
We need to make the library.
Yeah, I don't know who.
Okay, Ron, please.
Could, could we establish another page on Ellisville's website to just hold these documents specifically?
It goes into the document center where they can do it by name search, and then it's also on the business page of the webpage.
Can we have a special page on Ellisville's website with just these documents? Because a lot of people don't understand how to search for it, and if we just had a special page to go to, click the link, it would be a lot easier for it.
Sure.
All right. Now, to you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thanks, yes, for having me come back and talk a little bit about this. I won't go too far, too deep into that, I'm not sure what the discussion was about doing with Plan Commissions or Planning Departments, but that, that's not part of...
Just a bad rumor that's gone around.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe it's just in need of a little bit deeper discussion. I think the intent was, when we do our comprehensive plan updates and our, and our ordinance rewrites, we spend a lot of one-on-one time with Plan Commission members because they need to understand that. I think I mentioned last meeting that sometimes those are very painful meetings because you're going through sentence by sentence, word by word, making sure everybody understands the legal liabilities of all that. And so that process is incorporated into this task order, and as Sandy mentioned, we will be glad to come and answer questions or talk to the Plan Commission specifically about their role and how they can be engaged. I think that from an engagement standpoint, there are some specific milestones in, in the scope of services where we want to engage the Plan Commission specifically, but there's also areas where they can be involved in steering committees, in advisory groups, and sort of the day-to-day review of that. So we'll make sure that we kind of give them a crash course about how they can get engaged with this. Real simply put, the intention of this task order is really getting to the Unified Development Ordinance. And I think that your attorney or some of your staff may be able to tell you horror stories about the way that most communities are set up now as they go through subdivision ordinance, they have a zoning ordinance, and what ultimately will happen is one ordinance will say one thing, the other one will say the other. They don't communicate, or they don't rely back and tie in together, and so it becomes much more complicated. So what a lot of communities are doing now is they're developing these Unified Development Ordinance, which means one ordinance now replaces the two separate ordinances and tie together. And that needs to be based off your comprehensive plan. And the really good news about Ellisville's comprehensive plan is that when the Invision Ellisville process started, we took a real deep dive into your comp plan, and all of the recommendations that we advanced through the Invision Ellisville process are based on the goals and objectives of your comprehensive plan. So Invision Ellisville did not redo the comprehensive plan, but the items that are in the Invision Ellisville are those same directions that were happening in the comprehensive plan, but they've been detailed a little bit more, and there was a much more extensive public engagement process that we went through with that Invision Ellisville. So instead of, you know, we talked at the beginning of, of this process about the need to update that comprehensive plan, but by an update, we don't think that you need to rewrite your comprehensive plan completely. So the comprehensive plan, because Invision Ellisville is based upon that, the only thing that's really missing from the Invision Ellisville plan that is required in a comprehensive plan is the land use component. And if you recall, Invision Ellisville wasn't charged with developing land use for the whole community. What we did was we looked very specific, specifically at five targeted areas of redevelopment, but that was kind of the hard part. So the rest is just sort of filling in between those spaces. So what our proposal includes is not a complete rewrite of the comp plan, but completing just those land use components that weren't included in Invision Ellisville, repackaging it, and then bringing the Invision Ellisville plan as the new comprehensive plan to be adopted. Then we would base the UDO on that Invision Ellisville plan. So that's what this task order is. So the, the amount of fee that's based here, that's discussed here, only a small portion of that is sort of for the redo of the comp plan, that getting the comp plan up to speed. The majority of these items and the majority of the cost will come with actually doing the UDO portion of the project. And we've written this as there's a, sort of a base level of effort and compensation, and then there's what we call optional tasks. And just from our experience in working with other communities, these are things that they typically request help on, but in the interest of trying to be as cost-effective as possible, we've kept those as optional so that you have the ability to choose whether or not you do those. If you want to try some of those things through your planning department or on your own, you can. If you want assistance with that, we can come back and we can, we can do that. But that's broken down on page six and seven of the task order. And this is, we're looking at trying to do this, we're trying to do the update of the land use portion and the adoption of the Invision Ellisville as the new comprehensive plan in six months or 270 days, and then having the, once we get through that, it would be a 12-month process to do the, the UDO typically. Again, that's the painful, slow part. Are there any other specific questions that maybe I can help address?
No. I think I'm good with, with what you presented and what, what the plan will do. I have some questions for supervisors that are involved to find out where the money would come from.
Well, I want to talk about that because we, we talked about, thank you, sorry.
Thanks. Yeah.
We started this last year. I don't want to keep pushing this further and further down the road, and the budget is in and of itself, for want of a better, but we're in a very complicated process right now with money's coming from different places. Together with that, if we put this off until next year's budget, we're four or five months behind the goal. And I know Sandy's about to hate what I'm going to say, but there is money in the general fund that we could take and move to this, or ARPA, or whatever the pleasure of Mike and Sandy would be, and that would be how I would go to, to push it somewhere beginning almost immediately or as soon as the contracts could be let aside, those that were necessary. I would go, we have a special appropriation to move this money, and again, let's not put off till tomorrow what we can start now.
Sandy, where, Mike, what are your thoughts?
I think we're going to have to do an additional appropriation. Mike had talked to me about that already, for about $125,000. I'm not sure if that increases with this, or if that included this, but that'll take me about a month to accomplish.
How, the general fund or ARPA?
General fund. ARPA's pretty well spoken for with trail enhancement and flood remediation.
I didn't know that, I just thought I'd ask, honestly, it's, I don't care what country.
The $128,000 has some of that stuff that we'll probably have to go over to spell it out for you.
How comfortable are you from moving it from the general fund, Sandy? I mean, is, do we have, and I know with fuel prices, I mean, they've gone down, but they're still probably historic medianized.
I don't know.
Yeah, but, I mean...
Well, this is, because it's a one-time purchase, it's not going to build with time like personnel. So when we did the last additional appropriation, which was $128,000, I think, for the fuel and different things, for fire and police, that when I worked all the way through that calculation, we still had 1.2 million available funds, so I think that we're fine with doing additional appropriation out of general fund.
Doing the wrong thing, I'm not saying for everything we start doing this, but this is such a time-sensitive thing that we can't afford to fall four or five months behind.
I, I don't disagree with that, I agree. I, I don't think it needs to wait till next year's budget.
Right.
And I just find out if there's any other funds we can pull from, and it sounds like the general fund would probably be the best fund for this, correct, Andy?
I would leave it to these two to figure out which funds they want to pull it from, rather than us specifically.
I, that's a great point. And I've read somewhere, I don't know if this is, that lit may be coming in higher than...
I did get the certified lit last week.
How does that go with what we projected?
I honestly have not projected, I mean, compared it to what we have.
You got certified PS lit, not lit, right?
No, I got the lit, the PS lit, and the new one, and it's a, it's like 1.324. So it's even, I mean, we didn't, we thought it would be between 1.2 and 1.4, and so it's almost, yeah.
But we budgeted based all our projections on the 1.2 number?
Yes, we did.
Okay, again, that's for next year.
Does it work for you paying for it this year?
The task?
The, the, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, I would like to pay for it this year and move forward, I mean, the last thing we need to do is wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sometimes I'm impatient and determined, I can't remember the correct term.
So do you want a motion for that, or what do you...
Well, that's kind of what I asked the council, what, and Darla, what do we need to do? Can we, you know, direct them to find the money, or do we? Because I know that if we move forward to do this without the full council being here...
Here, here's the deal, with an additional appropriation.
Okay.
We have to advertise it and have a public hearing.
Okay.
So I got to get it in the paper, and it has to be at least 10 days before the hearing.
So we have that pressure release valve to do this?
Yes.
I just don't know if you wanted a motion instructing them to move forward that we were going to pay for it this year, or just, you want to go on opinions of council?
I think the fact that the council has a...
Consensus, I guess was the word.
Consensus is fine on this, and then we can discuss it again when she, after Sandy does her appropriation, does her advertising, and then it can come back before the council.
Right, before any money spent.
Approval of the contract.
Yeah, and that'll be in the ordinance.
That's kind of what I, I want to get the ball rolling, I agree with Scott and everybody. We've waited, we've waited, and guess what, we've waited again, and I think it's time to, to get moving, so...
We've made a lot of things that will come up again later too, so, yeah.
And the longer we wait, I mean, just like anything, it ends up costing more and being harder to do.
Although I am kind of glad that we did wait a little bit, so it dovetails well with Invision, as opposed to redoing this twice.
So if we're doing an additional appropriation and we're going to do a public notice, will, is there any further discussion on allowing this to be part of the Taylor Group's task to be performed? When, when do you want to bring that up further?
I would suggest we do it when Sandy posts the public meeting for the appropriation.
I would be very much in favor of that, I mean, just from consensus standpoint.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask.
I think from continuity it makes sense.
Right, right, right.
If there's any objections, you know, we'll have the public notice, and we'll hear from them and other council members when it comes directly to a vote.
So you'd want to vote on this task three after the additional appropriation?
Right, but at the same meeting.
He's going before the additional appropriation, is it not? Because we'll have to approve moving forward task three and then approve this to pay for it, because otherwise we're approving to pay for it before we vote on it.
Right, but why can't we do it at the same meeting, I guess? Is there a problem with that?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just a sequence of...
Yeah, that's fine.
But I do want to say we've passed the others, you know, the...
Schematics.
One and...
Two.
I don't know the numbers, I'm sorry, but we passed two of them at the last meeting and one of them at the, at the meeting before. So, I mean, they have passed some already that we're going to have to include in that additional appropriation, so... I don't know if you have to tie the contract approval to that, or you could say pending approval of an additional appropriation, or we can wait.
That's fine, I guess, that's okay with me. What's the council's pleasure? Do you want to vote on the contract tonight or wait until you have a full board? Or just go ahead?
My preference would be to wait till we have a full board, but we get the ball rolling, you know, like we've discussed.
That sounds fine.
It's kind of tomato-tomato, it's not going to slow it down. So we don't need any official council action for this, then? Okay.
No.
Any other discussion on this?
No.
Any public comment on this? Okay. Moving forward, flood report.
I do have something to report. The US Army Corps of Engineers sent a verification letter. It's a, basically a notice to proceed, so we only have one other permit, and I think we'll be ready to start putting together documents so we can put it out for bid, so...
What part?
Awesome.
What part?
Yeah. Well, you said the Corps of Engineers, but is it Stewart Property, or is it Vine Street?
It's Vine Street, yeah.
Flood remediation.
Yeah, it's for the flood remediation. It's what Christopher Burke's been working on, and I haven't talked to Andrew yet, I just got this, but I, I know Christopher Burke received the same notes.
Okay.
And I can send it out to you all if you'd like to see it.
All right. Anybody on flood report? Seeing none. New business, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation Economic Vitality Project. Jennifer? Oops, and I will go back to Invision Ellisville here in a minute. No, we'll do yours and then we'll go back. I already called you out.
All right. Thank you so much, my name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County despite the name, it was a name we received in 1985. And we're really delighted that Mr. Farmer and Mr. Ellis are part of our executive committee because really all parts of the Monroe County community are just key components of what we're doing here. What I came for tonight is to share about an initiative we're working on called the Economic Vitality Project, or EVP, and also provide an invitation to you all, as well as individuals in the audience and anyone listening that's based anywhere in Ellisville. We have continued to hear from our employers and other local organizations across the community that we face a lot of shared challenges, workforce, housing, infrastructure, and a lot of these things are being dealt with in silos in different portions of the community and across different sectors. So we launched the Economic Vitality Project as a way to do three things, to bring people together across sectors in the community, number two, oh, number one, to say what do we want to tackle together. Number two, how do we support the existing initiatives to address those things, like Invision Ellisville, which would, we would see as a critical component of this. And then number three, where are additional steps needed to fill in these gaps for our community? It is, to be very clear, it is not a study. I think that many times we're really great, we have a really rich base of studies in our community, but a lot of times when it comes to implementation, we run into some challenges. And so this is something that we are convening people across the community now and through the end of the year to say what are the actions that we're going to take together towards addressing these things in our community. There's five areas of focus, so housing, workforce, infrastructure, quality of life, and business growth and job creation. And many of those things also align with the things that are being worked on here with Invision Ellisville and other efforts. Many of you have maybe received invitations so far to participate in different committees or focus groups for the project, and thank you for everyone who's participated in that so far, including some of the folks in the audience here. The invitation that I have this evening, and this is where I invite folks to take out your phones, if you go to the website, bloomingtonedc.com, so that's bloomingtonedc.com backslash EVP, there is an engagement survey on the website, and there's an opportunity for anyone in the community to fill that out and participate in some way. The reason that we came here this evening to share this with you is really threefold related to Ellisville. One is because we want to be able to support the implementation of Invision Ellisville. One is because we want to be able to support the implementation of Envision Ellisville through this project, through the EVP. Number two, a lot of times when we talk to businesses and other community leaders, they're really excited about the things that are happening in Ellisville, and they see it as a really important and critical part of the county and everything that's going on here. But the third thing that we sometimes find is not everyone realizes what's happening in Ellisville. So there's folks who are plugged in who know, and then there are others that maybe aren't so plugged in. And so we want to make sure that the town of Ellisville has a really effective voice in this process, in this process, and that the solutions that we come together for, for the community, is tailored to each different part of the community. Knowing if we address something like housing or workforce, it's going to look different in each part of the community, so we want to make sure that we're supporting the initiatives that do that in each individual portion of our community, but then also that we're helping to support solutions that you may be siding with in this community as well. So again, that's BloomingtonEDC.com backslash EVP. It is literally, it takes less than two minutes to fill out the engagement survey on the website. And anybody in the audience here, we encourage you to go to that as well. And thank you to everyone who has done that so far. If you haven't yet received an update, be on the lookout for it, because we're going to have some focus groups and other things coming up moving forward. That is essentially the overview. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to speak to those as well.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And now we'll jump back up to the Envision Ellisville update. And sorry about that, out of order, but we made sure you got you.
Good evening. My name is Krista Curtis. I'm an Ellisville resident. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I work at Cook Medical, and I've also served as the co-chair of Envision Ellisville for the last two and a half years. So first of all, you've had plenty of Envision Ellisville conversation over the last few weeks, so I feel like you're fairly well up to date on where we are with the project. But I, I did miss a last, the last couple of meetings, and I just had a few things I wanted to share and a few things I wanted to say. So the first thing I want to do is say thank you to you for your leadership. I know and we knew as a volunteer group that you've been grappling with a lot of things, grappling with where to go next. I hear you talking about, we've been talking about these issues for a long time. Our goal always was and will continue to be to support you and to support the vision of the community. So I'm really happy to see that the work that we did through Envision Ellisville is work that you can leverage and work that will help support you as you take the next steps forward. Anytime you face something like this, it's uncomfortable. There's a lot of change and it's scary. So I'm grateful that you have been open to the work that we've done, and I'm glad that you can, you can leverage it. There are rumors going around, there's misinformation, and there's also a lot of questions in the community. So I wanted to take a few minutes, kind of on the record, transparently, to talk about some of those things. So the first thing that I would like to say is that Envision Ellisville is not a power play by any one individual or any organization. That was never the intent. It's been a group of volunteers who are passionate about the community, who want to engage the community and get the momentum kind of gathered in one place. I'm a big believer in collaboration. I've worked in a lot of communities, and the only way that things get done is when people come together. When business, residents, not-for-profits, and government come together, that's the only way that things happen. So we have to do this together. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to say is, I know that it, I've been hearing people saying that they're feeling rushed. I think there's a difference between urgency and panic and feeling rushed. I think there is urgency. I know that you feel it. I know that there are people knocking on the door of our community who want to build business here, who want to build homes here, and one of the main reasons for Envision Ellisville was for us to take charge of our own destiny as residents of this community. So we have to find a way to work through the urgency together. We need to keep the emotion out of it. We need to be logical. We need to use common sense, and we need to collaborate. So I think my big ask of anyone in this room, anyone watching, is if you feel like you don't have information or you have questions, just ask. We have a website, you mentioned it, William, we have an Envision Ellisville website that has been, oh, I don't know, a year, year or so. Everything that we've been done, that we have done has been published on that website. The plan is published there, all of the comments from the community, the results of our survey, everything is on the website. Dan Rary came every month to this meeting to update the council and make sure that you were aware of what we were working on. We invited council members to be a part of the process. We came to the council before we took the plan to the community and presented it to the council and gave you an opportunity to give us feedback. We wanted this to be your plan, not our plan. We wanted it to be the community's plan. And so we have made, I feel like, a really good, good faith effort to involve people, to make sure that people had access to the information. And I still, I still understand that sometimes people feel like, maybe it moved down the road and I didn't catch it, and that is completely understandable. We're going to do whatever we can to help walk alongside people, answer their questions, and we're going to stay here. As this volunteer group, we're going to stay here, and we're going to stay beside you. We're going to lock arms, and we're going to work shoulder to shoulder to take this, this community into the future. So again, I just want to say thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I just want to thank you for your leadership, and I remember having this conversation, what was it about? It was pre-COVID, so that could be 20 years ago, it kind of feels like.
We did.
And just kind of starting this, and that excitement and that drive for wanting a better community, and I just want to say I appreciate that.
I'm excited to be a part of it. I've worked in other communities where I got involved in community development, so when this opportunity arose three years ago for me to do it here in, in the town that I now call home, I really wanted to be a part of it. So it's going to get hard sometimes, but I'm still having fun, and I hope you do, too. Yep.
Thanks. Okay. Next is the agreement with Monroe County and the City of Bloomington for animal control services for 2023.
And that is a draft, so I just want, I put it on there for you to look over. I mean, if you have any comments, I think we need to take it back to them and, you know, let them know, or just let them know that we're okay with the draft. I think there's 92 animals surrendered this last year, well picked up, surrendered, whatever, and they were at $283 each, so our cost went from $19,000 this year to $26,000 next year.
Is that about on par for a number of animals that?
It's been up and down. It went down quite a bit the last few years, and according to national news, during the pandemic, people wanted animals. They were home and they wanted animals. Now they're back to work, things have changed, and they're not as, I'm not saying this is the sole cause, but they're not as able to maintain them, and so they're surrendering some instead of. So I think that's why the cost went up.
And we don't see any, we believe the number of captures, that's accurate, I mean.
Yeah, there was, when we first entered this agreement, we asked for a printout of every address, name, animal, and I verified to make sure they were in Bloomington. I think I did that for three consecutive years, and I, I, they were very accurate, so we didn't get that kind of detail this year.
Our only real disagreement over the years has been over a possum that gave birth.
We had 14 possum babies, and we had to pay that fee for each of them.
Has there been any possums this year?
I, see, I don't know the answer to that.
And if, and if we capture male and female rabbit, we got to specify they're kept separate because we could have a similar situation.
Very well.
I don't have any issues with it.
And again, I, you know, I'm always batting away at things, so when Jeff Cockrell emailed me, I said, you know, just, I'm just saying that we're all residents of Monroe County, and we all pay in the same tax rate as everyone else in Monroe County, and this tax, or this fee that we're paying, you know, I, I feel like sometimes it's double, but he did explain to me that this money is not going to the county, this is going to the Bloomington Shelter, and, and that our tax dollars are more paying for the animal control officers. And, you know, the ones that go out and pick the animals up and that type of thing.
Do we need council action on this, Darla?
Yes, if you approve the contract, you need to approve it or make a motion to approve it.
I'll obtain a motion either way.
I would move that we approve the agreement between Monroe County and City of Bloomington for animal control services for 2023.
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll have some permanent documents to sign at the next meeting.
Okay. On, on this business of animal control, have we gotten this straightened out yet on my appointment to the board?
No, I haven't heard any more about that.
No, we haven't. I'll continue to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
While we're having a public floor on animal control, anybody wants to adopt an animal, they desperately need to get some of those animals moved, so please go down there and visit because it's packed.
Yes. Okay, police promotion. I assume that would be Jimmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you remember, we had a retirement in 1st of July, Sergeant Eric Shadon retired and moved to Florida on us. He was our lab technician investigator, did a nice job. We moved, we made that promotion back in 2017, I believe. But tonight I bring towards you an individual, and I know a couple of meetings ago you allowed me to make this position of lieutenant's job. But bring tonight Zachary Michael. He's a graduate of Indiana University with a 3.636th grade point average in environmental affairs. He was a Hutton Honors College member. He graduated from Blackford High School with academic honors. He's a member of the Monroe County Animal Management Commission, a member of the Monroe County Careers Board, which is what we get a lot of federal money through, and he's IT, a great IT coordinator. He's been with the Ellisville Police Department since June of 2010, and has, was a police officer at Indiana University before that. But I'd like tonight for you to approve Zachary Michael's promotion to lieutenant, if you would.
All right, I guess we have council action on this?
I would move that we promote Zachary Michael to the rank of lieutenant effective immediately.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If you'd allow me to pin his lieutenant's bars on, I'd appreciate it.
These are the things I love presiding over. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd like to share a little story about Zach Michael, if you don't mind.
And Scott, and Scott wants to make a comment, too.
Whenever we changed software programs in 2013, I bought three new computers, and I lined them all up on a table in the clerk's office, just waiting for, you know, to get them all updated and going, and and so Zach came in for some reason, and he's, he asked about those. He said, can I do that for you? And so he got all those computers initiated and up and ready for our software update, and it was absolutely fantastic, and he didn't even charge me a penny.
All right, don't go in, don't go anywhere.
The final thing I want to give him is his badge. Detective, helpful, department, lab tech, and that's it. So we appreciate you.
Hold on just a second, I think Scott.
No, go ahead. Let him do that.
Okay. You can do that. Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, I think.
Thank you.
That's for the computer.
Congratulations.
If I can, just a quick comment, because I know people have asked this question about it before. The promotion that we just did was in the role of the board's role as the board of safety for the town. This differs from when the deputy chief was hired. That is an appointment by the board. The action we just took was acting upon a recommendation by the chief. So understand, this was not an appointment. This was his decision that we ratified and agreed with. Whenever we hire the chief or the deputy chief, that is a direct appointment by the board. So just to put that into the record, there needs to be a, it gets, gets a little bit squirrely in the town because we're serving the board of safety and as the town board. But for the top two ranks, both in police and fire, those are direct appointments by the board. There is no recommendation by anyone else. When we go to the ranks below that, that, those are acting upon the recommendations of the chief of both of those units. So just to put that out there to clarify for the record and for history, this is what happened.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that information because I've never done that before in the minutes, so thank you.
Okay, any public comment on this? Normally I don't, the personnel issues, but as long as it's positive, I don't think we can have an issue. All right. Ellisville Parks and Recreation Department Special Non-Reverting Operating Fund. Who has that?
I'll talk about that one. Because it's got a little bit sideways to the last meeting, and I apologize because I was on Zoom, and you can hear about every fourth word on Zoom, and it doesn't play well. This is a culmination, as those members of the board and frankly all the supervisors know, this is a culmination of about four years' worth of on-again, off-again effort between the town, a volunteer organization, between the Richland Township trustee and the Richland Bean Boston School Corporation. There have been, and I'm not going to get into it, a whole lot of things over the years have been very positive about the volunteer organization. There have unfortunately been some gaps that have occurred, not by anyone's stretch of the imagination or fault, but because of the fact that it is a volunteer organization. Now comes a time in history where it kind of behooves the town to step up and partner with everyone. And when we say partner, that's, that's not really what it is. The town is now going to step in and using its authority with the Parks Department, and actually using the Parks Department as a Parks Department, start these things moving forward. Before, it's been 30, 40 years' worth of volunteer parents trying to put a league together on a shoestring. My kids have played down there. There's people in the room who are adults who've played down there, and that has worked continuously over the years because they have been volunteers. The town is an entity who is here 365 days a year, every year, and continues forward. We have had a Parks Department over the years, which is made up of the Parks Board, but no employees. And really, we, all we've done is do the best we can to provide parks and playground equipment, but there's never been any programming behind it. So when we talked about partnerships, and Jimmy, I apologize to you, I wasn't able to be here last time to, to help you with this. This is not a partnership as in everybody has a say at the table, as it were, and this, this sounds harsh, and I just don't know how I mean it. This is Ellisville forming a Parks Department recreational league for baseball, softball, football, and whatever else becomes of that that will take the place of the current volunteer organization. Now where the partnership comes in is that the partnership exists between us and the school corporation for the use of their facilities, and us and the township trustee for the use of his facilities. But those folks have just, for want of a better word, ceded the use of their property and are cooperating with us for the betterment of the whole town. The Parks Department will run the entire thing. It will not be holding money for someone else. It will be funds coming to the town of Ellisville, vented out by the town of Ellisville where it's appropriate. It will not be anything where we're holding money for a third-party organization that may or may not be a not-for-profit. They've done phenomenally over the years, and a whole lot of people, and I could start naming off folks, but I think we'd be here forever, have put in hour after hour after but I think we'd be here forever, have put in hour after hour after hour, hundreds of thousands of man-hours over the years to keep these leagues going. But it's just thankfully becoming unmanageable for them because it is so popular. And it's gotten expensive because again, the fact that there's no underwriting. There's a whole lot of kids out there, folks, who just, a whole lot of families, who can't afford it. I think, you know, we're starting down the road with Vision Ellisville, we're starting down the road with other things. There is a point where this town has stepped in and said, you know what? You may not be able to afford this, but we can underwrite that to get these kids involved. Because we, again, I hate to be this way, but we can look at two things. We can give people things to do, places to recreate, or they're going to leave. They're going to go other places. You know, corporations aren't going to come in. This has been an incredibly successful program. I mean, I live close, I see it every night, and it's burgeoning. It keeps moving forward. The basketball program is something that other basketball coaches are really looking for as developmental leagues. This is a great time for us to have this partnership with the school and with the trustees because they're bringing things to the table, we're bringing things to the table. And our thing we bring to the table is management and stability. So that I would request this evening that A, we establish an Ellisville Parks Department Special Non-Reverting Fund. What that is, is for the public and the audience, every year at the end of the year, realistically midnight on December 31st, any money that's not expended from any line item in the town, revert back to the general fund, so they don't carry forward into the next year. This fund and any other non-reverting funds we have, and I don't know if we have any at all.
Well, we have a lot of non-reverting.
Okay, so I stand corrected. We have a lot of non-reverting funds. Those monies stay in that account permanently, and it builds up. So which is allow, which allows you to do things over time, let's invest in more fields, invest in better equipment, invest in personnel. So eventually this will become, and we're going to have to start it with some cedar money, which I'll bring up here in just a second, this will become a self-funding thing over the years. It will be a few years before it is. It will. But if you look across the board, are we going to start small? Yes, but we have the advantage of 35 or 40 years' worth of volunteer people getting this organization up and running. It's not like you're putting that on paper, players wanted. We've got people standing outside the front door trying to play at this point. So I think as a board member, as a parent, as a resident of Ellisville, it's time that the town steps up and actually puts the Parks Department in the Parks Board and moves forward for the betterment of everybody. Because again, for want of a better word, we can either do this or we can watch it fail. And if we watch it fail, then we're going to have to put it in other places, and that's not something any of us want to do. I would, besides moving that we, you know, establish this fund, I think in Sandy will have to put it somewhere appropriate, and I don't know where, we need to have some starter money, again, so she's going to do an additional appropriation, because we do need to hire a part-time person in the Parks Department, which we've never had before, to be able there to, to take in monies, you know, for registrations, to work out, not necessarily scheduling, because I think you'll have plenty of volunteers to do that. But again, there's administrative matters that have to be handled. Who's ordering this? Who's ordering this? Who's ordering that? That's going to have to be the Parks Department doing that. And I know Sandy's worried about paying out a lot of money. Again, it would be nothing else than Jeff ordering things for the sewer plant. You know, it's, you know, it's the same thing. And realistically, you're looking at ordering some sports equipment and some uniforms. You're looking at some other things that are, quite frankly, and the amount of work that gets done in this town every day, minute in scope. So I'm sorry we got off track last time. I apologize for that. It was never intended to be that way. So for the people who came to speak, I gratefully appreciate that. But this is a culmination of many, many years of work, start, stop, COVID got involved. And again, Vision Ellisville kind of wraps all this together, and part of that is staying here for recreation, staying here for the growing up. These are memories that these kids will have for decades, for a lifetime. So thank you to RBBYS and to the township trustee for establishing such an incredible program. Thank you for being willing to essentially cede the leadership of that to the town. So they will essentially, as it stands currently, as I understand it, they essentially will cease functioning, and the town will begin functioning. No monies change hands. No monies. Ellisville starts at minute one, hour one. The clock starts running on us. We're not picking it up from somebody else. Now, will we have assistance from them? Absolutely. You've got a bunch of incredibly dedicated people who are very, very smart at how to run these things, how to staff these things, how to coach these things. They'll come aboard as volunteers for the Parks Department. Jimmy and the Parks Board have to come up with some vetting procedures that very quickly should be able to be happening. But we need to move forward because we're staring at basketball, needing to really start registration here pretty quickly.
May I?
Just one second. And particularly with not knowing what's going to happen with A, the economy, B, you know, any type of resurgence of COVID or anything else, it's really important that we have these things in place and rolling so that there is something for the kids to do as we get into the fall season and something for them to look forward to.
Well, Nicole, my new deputy.
Noel.
Noel is also, I'm sorry.
She'll, she'll get to meet you eventually.
Once you're here long enough, she'll know your name. That's how she works.
I do get it right sometimes.
Okay.
But she is involved in that group, and she attended a meeting last Thursday. And at that meeting, they announced.
Let me stop you right there. I know what got said at the meeting last Thursday and the conversation today I had with them, that is null. Ellisville will begin tonight at zero. So.
Well, there is no additional appropriation money in the Parks Fund, I have to say. There is some cash available, but we've also been doing quite a bit of things for trails. So I don't have cash available for initial appropriation.
It will have to come from someplace else. So we'll have to figure that one out. We're not talking about a lot of money.
What are you talking about? How much?
What do you think? We were looking at.
You said that for next year's budget. To hire a part-time person.
Well, can I interject?
So I think we were looking at seven to 10,000.
Okay, can I interject? A couple of things. One, 10,000, if you're looking for that, I don't know when we're going to get the payment from the opioid summit, opioid settlement, but that's $10,000 right there. So that's something we need to look into. So it may not cost the town.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm meaning is, we're going to have to hire, again, a part-time person. I don't know, 15, 20 hours a week, whatever you guys decide to pay. But somebody needs here to be able to do this. And part of the conversation that occurred Thursday is because of, quite frankly, disastrous introduction of this the last meeting, had people wondering if this was going to move forward or not. You know, when we talked today with some of the board members, they were a little more at ease with our ability to explain and potentially move forward on it this evening, rather than interjecting other thoughts. They're perfectly comfortable with this from my conversation about 3 o'clock. So again, I understand, Sandy, that there's some hesitancy here where we're going to find the money, and I leave that to you and Mike to find it. Eventually, this money will come back to us as we move forward with this.
Well.
There's a lot of questions that come with this.
I can tell you right now that I was just thought we were just going to vote on opening a non-reverting fund. I didn't think we're going to be moving any.
That's one part of it, yes.
Well, I know, but I didn't think we're going to be moving any money tonight because I was told we have to do an ordinance for the. Right, for a non-reverting fund. And I think that we need to have some type of outline to all the council members to look over.
I'm sorry. We're only voting on the fund, what I told you was moving to put money in, that's going to have to come at a different time in a motion, in an ordinance, like you said. But I'm just trying to give everybody the global picture.
Oh, okay. So tonight, the only thing we'd be doing is.
The only thing we're considering tonight is moving on this fund.
Directing to, okay.
But what I did want to do is just establish a fund, everybody's going, what are you doing with it?
Gotcha.
But I thought you said as of tonight, we were taking over the program.
Well, we will when we start down this road, because we're introducing what we're going to do in the future. But we have no ordinance, we have no anything.
We're not there, the start, the timer has not started yet.
No, but it is ending on the other program. So we need to move forward with this to get everything else rolling.
So why did they stop at school? Because they had it all in place that.
Sandy, I don't want to talk about that in public because I'm not going to get into that. Because that's, that's not a conversation that I personally was involved in, and I know there's some differences of opinion. So what occurred in that role, I can't speak to because I wasn't there. I've heard different stories, but I think it's unfair for us to sit here and pontificate about what we've heard that may or may not be the truth.
Well, what about a job description for this new employee? And will we have some kind of understanding between us and know what they want from us and what we're going to give to them?
This is our program.
I think what Scott's saying, there is no us and them, it would just be us. We'd be right.
You're right. There's no difference in this and you hiring another person in your office to take payments for, take your pick of whatever fee. No difference. I mean, again, you take payments now for rentals.
Maybe about three a year.
That doesn't matter. But this would be hiring an employee to do essentially the same function, but having a lot more things coming in, doesn't have to be in your office. So that person would manage all of the things related to parks. And it would be the same as, again, planning or fire or police or whatever else managing that way.
Except we're going to start it from scratch with a new employee that hopefully will have some experience in this. But you know, there is still a lot of, you make it sound so easy. But there's still, like, I know that the PTA, PTO works the concession stands at the ballgames, and they get paid to do that.
Okay, now wait a minute, stop. That was under a different organization. We are starting, as I said, from ground zero tonight. So what may have existed with the other organization no longer exists with Ellisville.
And when does basketball start? How are we going to have all this? What's our deadline?
Whenever we get everything in place, then we can move forward with it. We don't have to have a drop date as far as it starts on September the 2nd. So if we're not ready to move until it's starting October 1st, it doesn't start till October 1st.
And then there's hiring of referees. We'll have to do 1099s. I mean, I have.
There are organizations that you can contract with specifically to do all of that for you. And some of these don't even have licensed referees that do them. Some of them use volunteer referees.
Well, I'm so glad that you understand so much about it, and I just wish that I understood as much. So, and I wish we had it in writing.
You will.
It's a big step for us. On the, it's going to change the dynamics of this board because you're not just handling town matters now, but you will be handling feelings of parents who have issues with things that have happened at the ballpark.
This is no different than us handling feelings of residents that exist in the town that don't specifically like the fact they got a parking ticket, or they don't like the fact they had to be told to take the room and sale sign down. It's the exact same thing.
Well, parents are much more passionate when you're dealing with their children.
Okay, understood. I've got several children.
Darla? One thing that one of the other councilmen had brought up to me, it's not here tonight, and I did not think was correct, but I want to be clear. He said that if we create a Parks Department and do this, they have their own taxing authority above and beyond the levy.
I think that's true, yeah. I am 90% sure that's true. I'll double check, but yes, it's like a library board.
So we would have no, we would have no control over that.
I don't know that that's a surgery.
Right.
Unless you want to remove one of us, you can do that, thus force control of the board. I think we're way back four minutes plan to me years ago when I first got on board. We're looking forward to this, by the way.
Yeah, I understand. But if, if we're giving taxing authority to someone else, that's a concern of mine.
How do they have independent taxing authority if they work at the pleasure of the board? It would be like the plan of commission going out and taking a loan for themselves.
Okay, are you talking about establishing a separate Parks Department in addition to the board? Or just leaving it at the board?
Well, we could go either way. The thought was establishing a separate Parks Department within the town itself.
I'm going to have to look that up for you.
Falling under town manager, sorry.
Right, but I think it's like a library board. You know, they can, if they've got money, and that's the question, is where are they going to get the money? You know, like, they could bond for projects and all, but they have to have a source of income. So I'm going to have to look into that and report back at the next council meeting how that would be structured.
Yeah, it needs to be structured. Again, the thought process that Mike and I discussed was structuring it within the town itself, with the Parks Board sort of like functioning as the board of safety for them, as we just discussed, to help make decisions and whatever else. Because the Parks Department or the Parks Board right now has its own bonding authority, hasn't done it for decades. They could have gone out and bonded for all the equipment you see up front.
Right, yeah.
But again, it's existed for not long without this fear. So again, we're kind of establishing the fear out here for something that's never occurred. Now, not to say it couldn't occur, but again, there's a whole lot of things that go into it.
So we would not, we don't currently have any tax authority over the taxing of what the Parks Board would do?
Currently, we, we have, they just put it in our, our budget, and they have never exerted that right.
But they could.
Well, that's what I'm going to have to check. You may, they may only have taxing authority if there's a Parks Department. I would have to look and see what the authority of the Parks Board is. And I'm hesitating because as you are aware, I believe, two, three, four years ago, the legislature gave town councils the right to do away with their Parks Board. So now, that's what I need to look at.
Because I'm not in favor of anybody having.
They already have it.
Understand. And again, I'll say I'm not in favor of that because we've got a situation at the school board still. And I mean.
That's a different, I understand what you're saying. It's a different part of government. It's not within the same town. So again, if we have to restructure in such a manner to allay your fears, I'm perfectly good with that. I'm just unwilling to see this organization fail when the town could benefit everyone across the board.
Is there a way they could do, if we do this, a memorandum of, an interlocal agreement that would give us final authority on any taxes or bonds?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
Or, I, I don't want any, we already have enough taxes upon taxes upon taxes. I don't care, you know, we seem to, not just, just government in general, not us here in Ellisville necessarily, but seem to have this mentality, if we need it, we just go get the money from the taxpayers. And it's, that's.
I guess, and Darla will be the final word on this, I still fail to see, and correct me, I could be completely wrong, how a board appointed by another board could then go off on its own and do whatever without the approval of the governing board.
No, and I understand what you're asking.
Right, and that's my understanding, the way it would be too.
Exactly.
And that's, but the other councilman brought up to me, no, they would not. They actually could do whatever they wanted.
No, I, I agree, that's the thing that's been put out there.
Right. That's why I asked. My understanding was the same as yours.
Right.
They could, but it would have to be in conjunction with us.
Right.
But if they can do it without, if we say no, and they say, I'm doing it anyway, that could be.
Well, because this is the same as Ellisville Building Corporation has the ability currently out there. If they decide they want to build whatever out there, we really have no control over that whatsoever. They can go bond it.
I don't think that's the case either.
Yeah.
I mean, but again, it's another organization that has the ability to issue bonds.
I mean, they're the ones who actually are technically on the hook for it, but it has to work through the town, and Sandy.
Back to where I'm going with Parks Department.
Right, if that's the way it works, that's, that's great. That's, that's if it works that way.
I see what you're getting at, but yeah.
My understanding and the way it was brought to me, and I didn't think that was the case, was they can do pretty much like the school board or the library or anyplace else. And if they want to, if they want to build a baseball stadium, put a bond for it, and we have no, if we say no, whoa, that's too much money.
But if we're paying for it, at some point, we have to have the ability.
The building corporation is a little different because that's, that was allowed by statute in order to allow municipalities to bond for projects and not be concerned about the debt ceiling. So.
It's a workaround, in other words.
Yeah, but a legal workaround.
A legal workaround, because we said it's legal.
For the stadiums and stuff.
Lisa Lee from Ice Miller set up our building corporation.
I'm not arguing against the building corporation.
You're saying it's already existence or something?
There's other things out there, and I think, again, I understand the concerns. Don't worry about it. Those are not lost on me. But in no disrespect for what you said, because I understand why you said it, I see a lot of people saying, we've never done this, let's not do it because. Well, guys, that should have ended a long time ago because what we're doing currently is not working in Ellisville. If Invision Ellisville would not be here. It's time to change, folks. And yes, I understand it's a leap of faith. We have really good people working for us that can do this. Take the leap of faith with us.
I'm not worried about taking the leap of faith. What I'm doing, worried about. Yeah, taking a leap of faith though, with somebody else's money.
I get it.
Right, and I mean, it's, it's the number one thing I keep hearing from residents. And again, I have to explain, it's not us. But it falls on deaf ears. I mean, there's somebody today, just on, that I was talking to about, about taxes. And if all of a sudden we're going to raise the taxes to get these bond issues, we can put the lipstick on the pig as they'd say however we want, but we're still putting lipstick on a pig. Like, as an example, if we want to build that. Like, as an example, if we wanna build that stadium, I thought they said they were going to get donations for that. Remember?
No, again, if we're gonna go down that road, there's multiple ways to get there.
Right, exactly.
That don't involve us.
Putting out money.
Putting out bonds and anything else. We're not even talking about that at this point, right now, what we're talking about in, and we've talked about a lot of things with this, you know, where we would like to see this in ten or fifteen years. The low hanging fruit we're talking about right now is, we've got a whole bunch of kids who need a place to play. We have the ability and should have been doing this for a long time, this is the point where we take that, I grant you, not infinitesimally small step, but we're also not looking at building fourteen pools and sixteen this and seventeen that.
Right.
We're looking at hiring a part-time person fifteen to twenty hours a week to manage the intake and, I guess, output of a recreational ball league, whether that be basketball, whether that be baseball, et cetera. And, again, this is, I understand, there are things that have to occur beforehand, but guys, this is not a giant leap, it is really not. Look around at every other city, town of our size, they're doing this.
I've tried to find other cities and towns doing it and I found Walcott up north, they're, they are doing it. And then I think Columbus has a non-reverting fund, but, I mean, it, when I put it out on my listserv, eighty percent of, or ninety percent of them said no, it's all handled through a volunteer group.
Okay, well, again, this is where we're at. I think Valerie will speak eventually.
Okay, but right now, the only thing we're looking at is creating the non-reverting fund.
Yeah, that's all.
And Darla, that would not matter whether we have a Parks Board, Parks Department, that's just a fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did somebody wanna speak, Valerie?
I'm listening to all this and I kinda lost out on a couple things. When Scott started out, I thought that the basic idea here was that we have a Parks and Rec Board and they manage the land use. And when Scott was talking, I thought, oh, the second part of this then is, let's create within that board not only land use, but events upon that land. And that's where I thought we were going, which means that if we wanna have a picnic in the park and the Parks and Rec Board wants to do another Envision Ellisville celebration, it would come under the Parks and Rec and they would be the one who'd get the bounce house or whatever. And I thought, this is great, because our kids grew up with the leagues and everything, but we are growing, our Envision Ellisville plan, it would be great for quality of place and activity. And so I thought, it's time that we, we do that. Then suddenly, we ended up from brainstorming to how to support it financially. I think that's very important, obviously, we do have to do that. But before we find money for something, we have to find the something worthwhile to have the money for. And my, at least that's my train of thought. So we have the plan, we have a good Parks and Rec Board, what's wrong with just making sure they have that authority to schedule events, do projects, and take, and take these things that have outgrown volunteer, and I do agree they have, outgrown volunteer, consistent success. That's really what we want, is consistent success. So, once we've done that, does everything have to come from a line item in the budget? First, let's look at what the activity we want, and then look at the budget, but does it just have to come from a budget? Couldn't there be an Envision Ellisville Main Street fundraiser with it, or, you know, a block party, cost you a buck to come in, that goes to the Parks and Rec Board? There are ways to do that. And at the same time, there's lots of free things that come. So I, I hope that when we talk about these things, we first look at the brainstorming, which is where I thought you started, with the activities that we think that are important to have activities, who's in charge? Parks and Rec. And, and ultimately, then we talk about the finances. And it doesn't have to be a huge amount in the beginning.
Let me just address that, that's where we're going, but I was trying to give a more global look at this, because there's been so many innuendos and false reports and people assuming one thing or another, so I thought it was very important that we kinda give a more global aspect of things that we're gonna eventually hope to get to very quickly.
Absolutely.
As opposed to just voting on this and.
For what, what are we voting for?
Yeah, it's kind of in the vacuum.
This is the first domino.
This is the first step and then jump right to step two, three, and four immediately as well.
To be very quickly, yes.
And, and I think that, that goes right along, correct me if I'm wrong, Krista, but that goes right along with, oh, you're right behind me, goes right along with quality of place.
Yeah.
And, and you mentioned land use before, how wonderful, and by the way, just a little side, has Parks and Rec thought about a Gaga pit?
What?
I don't know what it is, we haven't thought of it.
See me after the meeting.
See you after the meeting.
Who knows on a Gaga pit? Thank you, thank you.
They have one at Seven Oaks.
And aren't they terrific?
Is it like an octagon where one man, two men enter, one man leaves?
No. It's not quite that barbarian, yes.
I'd pay a dollar to see that.
So first of all, I just wanna say thank you for the background, I do agree with you that that was maybe missing last time, and that was very helpful. I wasn't here, but I was watching from the road.
So is I, I understand you have a word.
Yeah, that was very, that was very helpful.
Yeah, that's about right.
So first of all, I just wanted to say, I think, I think this is a really exciting conversation. I think that, I mean, the number one thing that came out of the survey, remember, we did a survey as part of Envision Ellisville, we asked community members what they wanted out of their town, Parks and Rec topped the list. We've got this huge grant for a trail, and I think we're gonna need a Parks Department. I think this is only gonna grow, and so I think this is a good step in the right direction, so I'm really excited about it. The other thing that I would say is, one of the things that we heard from the community when we asked people what they want, they talked about wanting Ellisville to be a complete community. So what that means is, I don't have to leave town, I don't have to leave, I don't have to go to another community to get what I want in my life, right? And so, I think this ties into that, I think this is a part of what brings us together as a community, it's the fabric of community, I mean, that, that ballpark, that's, that's where we all start, you know, that so many things happen there, so many things happen at these ballgames. And so, I think that however it gets done, I think we need to be creative, I think we need to be open, and I think, like you said, Scott, we need to embrace change and think differently and start down this road, see what works, and it's gonna grow, it's gonna grow. But I, I think this is what people are asking for, that we saw clearly in the survey, so I just wanted to speak in favor of it.
Darla, were you able to look into the opioid settlement we got from the Attorney General? I know there's like, what, ten thousand some, is it unrestricted, and then thirty thousand or something?
But, you know, there's, I'd have to look at that form, we're getting that over the next twenty or thirty years.
Well, yeah, it's ten thousand a year, total of fifty-eight thousand in the unrestricted, so we are getting ten thousand a year, not ten thousand total. But, there's restricted and unrestricted, and both together, I think it's like fifty, forty-five to fifty thousand. Can you look to see if the restricted can be used for parks, because that case can be made that parks are used to, to at-risk youth, to keep them off the streets?
And I wanna say, I'm not against doing this. I, I just wanna plan in place so we clearly know everything that it's gonna entail and the impact it's gonna have, and how much, what will this part-time person be responsible for, and what will my office be responsible for?
You'll see it all before it gets there, because nothing will be responsible for you other than like you would have with the other departments as we currently envision it.
But you, there won't be any volunteers?
No.
Or is this, so this person is not going to be engaging volunteers to run the?
Well, they would have volunteer coaches and things like that.
Okay.
But, just again, like what Bloomington uses and other folks like that, you know, because Bloomington runs the same programs we're talking about here, they run, you know, Co-Rex softball, they run baseball, they run, I think it's soccer or something, no, county runs soccer, you know, other things like that. We're not reinventing the wheel here, guys, you've got the county and the city doing the exact same thing we're talking about here, within their Parks Department, which is governed by Parks Boards. So, again, we're talking about, don't get me wrong, not inconsequential issues, you know, but we need to take care as we laying this out, but we are not reinventing wheels here, we are just following along a path on this side of the county, because no one else has the scope or the reach, or quite frankly, the responsibility to do it, and we do.
Well, you know, I talked to Bloomington and they have an association that runs their baseball, and they just rent out the fields at Winslow.
They also manage a lot of it, because I just talked to them today, the Parks Department manages most of that. It may be an association doing some things for it, but it comes directly out of the Parks Department.
Well, that wasn't what I was told, so, I guess.
So we can talk about it later, but again, I checked with them today before I come to the meeting. So, I guess, full circle argument.
I'm, I'm completely on board with creating a non-reverting fund.
Right, that's where we go tonight.
Right.
I just thought it was useful to have this conversation to kinda iron out last week's conversation.
I don't want anybody to think my question's meaning no or yes, but, I mean, these are questions, but I'm, I actually, I say, in spirit, we do need to grow the parks, this is our next stage, is the growth of the municipality. But, I mean.
You're putting how much into trails and we have no one employees in parks?
Right. So Darla, do we need a motion to direct you to create this fund, or how does that? Okay.
No, I and Sandy have already started working on the ordinance, so, I mean, you'll have it before you at the next council meeting.
And I guess we, just the wording would be between department and board? We need to find out.
Well, yeah, I will have to look at that and then I will.
Let us know.
Tell you at the next meeting what the scope.
Okay.
Of the Board's powers are with regard to.
I guess, again.
Pass the tax or de-tax.
Knowing the intention where, at least my part of this board intends to go with this, could you give us an idea of where to place this employee, whether that be so that they don't have the ability to run out and bond? And figure out the scope of that, because again, if we need to.
Yeah, I don't think the employee would have the authority.
Well, if we need to dissolve the Parks Board and reformat it some way to get it where we want it.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't wanna cede our taxing authority to anybody else.
Well, I agree, no, I agree. And I knew they had taxing authority, but I thought it emanated from us. So where do you wanna go from here on this?
I don't think we need to go anywhere on this, do we?
Hmm?
All right, so we got, next privilege of the floor, actually, any other comment, Trevor? Should we? Okay, privilege of the floor, any public comment on anything not on the agenda? There's been a lot on the agenda tonight, a lot of good discussion. Civil discussion, I appreciate that. Supervisor comments? I know Kevin has something.
I have two names to bring before the Board tonight for part-time positions, failed to get those put on the agenda in time. They've done the testing and everything, and like I said, these will be for part-time positions, it's within the budget of money we have, we've had a couple leave and we're looking to fill those holes. The first one is Dakota Hawkins and Austin Shadon. They'll have to complete their physical and you'll obviously get a favorable review on that, but we'd like to bring those to you to get them hired.
All right. Counsel action on that?
Make a motion to approve part-time hires, Dakota Hawkins and Austin Shadon.
Second?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Holden?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep.
All I've got to tell you is that all the work for the 2021 Community Crossings Grant and the 2022 have been completed, so we're just down to the paperwork part of it and getting that turned in and.
Awesome.
But all the work's been, been finished, so.
How's the road, the new paving?
Mother Nature's not cooperating very well, so, I mean, they, that particular day, it was given a bigger percentage chance of rain, so my rep from Indianapolis said just cancel it and it never rained a drop that day, so.
Better earn the side of caution.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of money and it'll literally wash down the drain and I don't wanna do that, so we're still working on trying to get it outside of the way. Thank you.
Denise?
I don't have anything, thank you.
No, I don't have anything.
All right.
Like I said, the Parks Board is looking forward, wherever, whatever forum you put us in, we're, we're looking forward to taking.
You're gonna be doing something, I almost guarantee you that.
I wanna be involved, yeah, I wanna be involved. And we got, we had a Parks Board member back here, I think she'll give a thumbs up too, right, for the whole thing, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I wanna thank Kip and Jenny Hopp, our Jeep from Hills Peak Tilt and Pro, was eleven thousand eight hundred, eight hundred dollars.
Wow.
And if I could, I would gladly donate it to Parks Department.
Eleven thousand dollars worth of Jeep with three hundred thousand miles on it?
That's right.
No, it didn't have that many miles, two hundred and sixteen.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But still.
Wow.
Or was it one hundred?
It was like a hundred and some, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't two hundred, it was a hundred and.
But still, wow.
And see, this guavails is a good thing for the town.
It used to be a car over a hundred thousand miles, especially municipal one.
Not even broken in.
Right.
Well, except the Chrysler's, they're way broken in.
Broken? No disparagement, sorry, broken in.
Jimmy's Chrysler's.
All right. Counsel comments?
We're good, yeah.
Oh, you have more, sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, I had an hour's worth of conversation on.
All right, on that note, we'll.
Why, why we would have the Parks Board as a former coach, as an eight-year-old kid that lived in this town? And I, I wished when I was eight years old that there was a Board thinking about a Parks Department. In my job, I get to travel to a lot of different communities, and we have been behind, I mean, I said this the other day, we're forty years behind communities of our size when it comes to our Parks Department, because we haven't, there's not a place to swim for our twelve, fourteen, sixteen-year-old kids, I mean, there's no community center, you can't, I went through a period of the greatest high school basketball, was what I've ever seen, and COVID, cell phones, video games have destroyed our athletic department over at the high school. This is a step in trying to move back to where we were at the time, I'd like to see other kids, other coaches, and other fans. And not, hardly a day goes by that people don't talk to me about, man, we playing our life around those games. And I, I would care if our girls golf team was ranked number one, I would like to see that happen at Edgewood, and I really think tonight is a chance for it to start right here with this downpour, and I applaud you for, for moving forward. It's all I said, I said I had an hour's worth.
All right, thank you for giving the Reader's Digest version. And for those too young, Reader's Digest used to be a book, you know, about this big, small.
It still is, I still get it.
It, it's kinda like the old people's version of TikTok, anyway.
When I figure out what TikTok is, I may not agree.
Any counsel comments?
No.
All right, on that note, we will adjourn.